I don't know the three. Discuss information pertaining to their local evidence sharing agreement with the city's windows and some of the county's assistance. I don't know Jeff, if you wanted to go first, Frank, if you wanted to go first, who all wants to do what?
I do not have. Okay, well. I don't know.
Pretty much like. They love to tell me.
Finish it up.
I'm really going. Uh, I have been working with uh, the city council members um, to see if we can come up with ways that we can, look at coming up with an agreement with the self tax district. And we get the city, may or may not have any in the future, and have that as a goal for also to be the work for us. As a community trying to move forward, and trying to look at the health, the way that I know, the good things are gonna use. The board enough. Hit some walls, hit some boulders, um, and I can expand on that better than I can. But I want to continue to keep this up and to continue to talk to everybody, everybody else, city members, you know. As as we go forward and then do do things. I'm I'm trying to, I think the city council members, George is back there, I've been there, just keep saying whatever they want to let. Mayor, all the same, man, I think. We're talking about stuff that are given very carefully, really, maybe not a. A community as a whole, not just one contract. In fact, yes, that's that's the approach that we're we're taking on this and trying to protect about these kind of things. I'll end the end of today, uh, Frank has some information. Um, it's not an action, I don't know, we don't have a lot of debate with.
From. Yeah, we did that a lot of stuff to survive, we may have a lot of stuff to survive, but you gotta have a lot of stuff.
And we're continuing to.
Yeah, we're okay, man, I'm not complaining, I think something's wrong, but we're doing the best that we can, we're talking, we're just. We're just gonna talk. So, I just thought I'd kind of like send all your information, so everybody's aware of it, and so I guess.
It should be ready to lock, well, hopefully, uh, mostly if you put it down there itself.
So, start us out, I mean, this district is a tiny district. And this is, that's the same team that wrote this. And it's like, there's there's there's. There are about six kids in this district. This building costs uh, uh. We kind of dollars, period, so it's just. Without the time that's happened. Well, it's certainly, it's the contract. It's it's the town ballot, it's the. Space, the contract is whatever it is. That are. I can do that, they want to. On top, I thought right there, up up all the way up on top, it's all the. The little knob on the side there. Yes, sorry, sorry, I'm really like there. He's gonna say I read it wrong, it's a picture, like that. So, what was all about was operating the creation of the central assistance district, handing up the resources themselves and these tracks to create a. For the purposes of financing operations of the district. What that meant was, over there, it's about citizens, what are gonna be hurt, it's next, like, to spend on stuff, it's a bit of a side, because it's. Both clearly the worst. So, this is the, and all the three parts of it. Um, the other, um, the, um, yeah, it's. Um, yeah, it's. Which is why this is not, you know, it's the one here that is. Okay. You see, one early, two, that's. The contract is what is that, it's a lot of, it's like. It's still been a lot of, there are a lot of. We only do press photos, and orders, and in the bottom, it's a forecast, it's on, that's what they're gonna have to do. For this, it's what it's like, you jump down there, so. That's actually, this is how it's, it's, it's. I couldn't explain this around the block, and it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not. Regarding the, they make it hard to. So, this is also just, yeah, yeah, like, what the government, you know, this is. Three and seven, so it's a little bit. And this would be various components of the district. So, the chapter is against the authority of the. Sistership may perform the following policies through the district. Strike the pavements or roofs of laser highways. The provision of long-term maintenance services. The maintenance and maintenance of laundry, convenience, parks, and other areas. The provision services of the public, of the welfare, which is necessarily subsidized by the government services. Or the provision of standardized cell, computers, and all of those things. Our savings, that's, that's, that's. But all of these things, probably, to be, for example, the. Not receiving, it's a 120, it's a 100, actually. Now, three eight seven oh zero. Textbook film, that is the only power this case is, the district's hands, it's a 200, that's a service. The whole exercise is in this place. Number six, it's a commitment to bring up the municipality necessary to be, to be, to be. Creating a agreement with the government, with the ready to ready, and allegations of the military, and the municipality, that's settled in. The example of that, the strength of that, is this into the municipality, which is also contracted, they follow the product, so it's, it's, it's. So, it's, it's one authorizing. It gets me to the city, the county could, so, so, that's. The city does, the campus school, and yourself, got. Where, on this funky, I don't know if it's. That it's carrying up, it's every season, six, that's, that's. Either inside or there's been a fair amount of, of, of. So, that exists. So, if you guys, if there's contracts between the county and the city, it only goes to the city, or even the founder first. And every city that money is, is not skilled, for the program to be successful first, the county is going off of it, so the long term, where every citizen is bothered, with the whole experience, you know. So, that's kind of the way, so, just looking at it, if you got a third year from one of those. This is just kind of our first, yeah, and on top of it, so. Uh, I know, I'm gonna ask you, people talk about what, what, what's the direct, that's up there.
What is, tell me about that one four three six eight, something like that?
Uh, one four three six, so, the four three six. I know, you have to work, I talked to you last week, and there's not any city, like, that's been, that's been, that's, that's. Did you know, or, or, or?
So, again.
Are there any, are there any roads that they're gonna extend by this city, here, inside this district, or? And so, I'm just kind of thinking about, out here, so I'm going back to those districts, so we got compression, like, that's a real high, it's not. Um, provision called long-term extension services. We've got destiny, but we do a good job of. I mean, the part I'm lost, it's a mixed vision, I don't know, it's a lot of things, it's a mix of. So, if the city got money for that, that would have to specifically get a power to place that control in, so it's just. Um, the maintenance and improvement of laundry, museums, parks, or other areas, facilities, and I don't believe we need to, 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 to. I'm sorry, I'm just asking, well, that's, I'm not in roads, but I'm just asking. Provision of services to benefits of the self, the welfare, and including the division of fire, bodies, or heart, the mental, so. I don't believe, the county has a third part, so. I don't believe the city has to leave the territory, the state, which is there. Um, if the most of the economic problems are all cumulative, I, we don't need to be there, I guess, but it's gotta be. Pointy the system, if there's pretty scary, you know, city, there, like, six, the. So, if that's what, if we left it that, if the practice were. And I was just saying, that's, that's, that's. So, can he, spin it, so I think, so you know, it's a, it's a. I know, I'm gonna ask you about fifty zero, and maybe we can use that, to let the, to, 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 uh, I don't have an answer for you, I just want to, jump around, maybe the part, or, 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 I don't know, there's been, it's not gonna be a, 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 a. Um, he said to ask me, they were, there should be something, say, a player, now, maybe a fairer player, if it was, if it was, maybe, 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 maybe. Um, it shouldn't just be a part of the, of the, of the. Maybe, 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 maybe. The now, so. Um. That's where you kind of, say, the, say, that's where it kind of gets, far as invert, you're gray areas, because they're maybe a hundred, maybe thirty, 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 twenty, twenty. Or maybe it's, it's. Two, right, but I don't have time to go, there's, I don't, there's, I don't, there's, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't. And, and maybe you can, there's, something, I don't know, you know, second, you know, that's, 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 that's. You know, I just don't know, I don't know. Um, so, the way that, and. You can't really mean that, I mean, you're asking, maybe we should remove something that's on the planet, but that's, there's nothing to do. He's right. There, I guess you gotta have, like, a way to ask it, because if you go to it. So the only way we're gonna get through is to circuit all that, or we can just all that, do it, or all that. Where every city that needs, can make some use of it. But the way it's more difficult, if something happens to the city, it's gonna come out. You know, asking the government, you can just say, I'll say, this is fair. We're gonna be all in for the city that's coming in, so then we're gonna get through, and then the city can really get through, and then, oh, God, it's, 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 excuse me, if you, if you, if you, when I'm in the city. They don't seem to stop it, it's kind of, I can't even slide, yeah, second time, they do a thing, so, so, so. So I think that's the reason. But it's tricky, maybe it's changed down, and, and if you're gonna be three of it. You got three options, and then I think, so we're very, very, very.
I'm sure folks have something to say, to, to, to. I mean, put y'all on timer, just to speak, and you see we got executive session after this, so. We'd like to take the first shot here. Go ahead, Matt.
My only question is the, uh, provision for, to welfare the citizens who live in the special district?
Yes, that is just one of the five, that's two, the welfare, they were all for it.
Yes, right.
Life, seriously, to be welfare. Honestly, I don't know, because that's, gonna be a form of research, whether they also do, I didn't have that out there. I can't really scan, I didn't have any, that I can, strictly, if, 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 if. When that's, I mean, possible.
You're gonna see, with selling, there's only regulations, and everything that's up at the last year as well.
That's the same question, I mean, I don't have time to figure out if there's defined it, considerable. Can I have one other comment?
Yeah, you could. So, as we had talked about, it's really not considered as particular people, cause, one, this part. Now, the rest of the, there's, there's, people that are particularly, and, and, I don't know, sort of, and. I think we have, clearly, the, 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 I did this, I did it in the, in the, that we were spending the dollars, we're paying that. So if you think about, and, if you think about, as you, think about, you, you, you were, you were developed. You just think, like, why, kind of, it couldn't be, we're gonna develop, we're, we're. Given multiple ways we could screen. Another question about, very, very, about, how do you move, how do we, technically, in terms of.
Starting with the city, then, well, then the county does the same thing.